There you go.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, we'll do salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Dakota.
Here.
Mr. Dillon.
Here.
Ms. Arty.
Here.
Mr. Hoey.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Seven present.
Uh, three. Special order of business, communication, remote participation. Members of the public may view the meeting via LTC and those wishing to speak regarding specific agenda items shall register to speak in advance of the meeting by sending an email to superintendent's office and indicating the agenda item and a phone number to call so that you may be teleconferenced in. Four, we have permission to enter, but what we're gonna do with this is we're gonna take this off because again, we really can't enter into contract, so just gonna make a motion that we, if we want to, will make a motion to direct the superintendent to start discussions about possibilities of renting some space at the St. Louis School. So, second, or speaking?
No.
Second. Okay.
Who did the first?
Me.
Me, okay.
Not you, me. All right, any discussion, any discussion on that? So, just, just to acknowledge if we do or we don't, and if you don't, just vote no, but we'll just say that yes, it's, it's okay, maybe, you know, take a look at the St. Louis School, see if there's a possibility of renting any space. That's the motion.
Are we gonna discuss like when we're looking to rent the school and for what purpose?
Um.
We assume that everybody knows that?
It's just the first stage of, to see if there's any, any, um, see what the feel is from the city, see what the feel is from the archdiocese, and then as we get into specifics, they'll come back with, um, more information for us. But this is just to get the ball started, just to say, do we even wanna look at the possibility of renting any space over there? So, that would be what the motion is. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Boyd, do you have any, um, maybe planning that goes into the, it being placed on the agenda or?
Yeah, we've, uh, essentially here, we've got, uh, if you recall from our last meeting, uh, Mr. Dakota even went out and viewed this property because of the limitations on space within the district due to social distancing and the requirements of COVID safety. Uh, there's a strain on space within the district and we believe that space is gonna continue to be constrained until at least there's a vaccine. Uh, right now, we have approximately, and Ms. Phillips has this, uh, the hard data, I believe, Ms. Phillips, approximately 2,000 students who apply for in-person learning that won't be able to be placed in person. Is that a good approximate? So, we know there's significant demand for in-person seats beyond the space we have available, so all those things come together to say, uh, whatever space exists, we believe we should explore it, uh, and Mr. Dakota was kind enough to actually view this property that led to some of the subsequent discussions for them to say, it's a possibility for you to consider.
Sure, so we, you know, not any set plans necessarily right now, but I agree, I mean, this is something that we should definitely be acting on, I think, you know, just, uh, from my view, it feels like we've had a problem, uh, with the city wanting to spend money to make money a little bit, and this is a perfect example of where it could help us, uh, in the future with that spacing. We have spacing even when it's not, you know, even when we don't need social distancing, so I'm all for it.
Right. Thank you. Naming rights, Mr. Dakota will come up later, but, so, roll call.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Dakota.
Yes.
Mr. Dillon.
Yes.
Ms. Arty.
Yes.
Mr. Hoey.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, so now we're on to reports of superintendent.
Thank you.
We have a one registered speaker, so why don't we let the speaker go first and then we'll jump into the reports?
Thank you. Does Joel have a report? Yeah, but is there an opening of school report?
I don't know.
Okay. Hi, I am Bridgette McHale to Wabbera, I live on Summer Street. I'm a, also a middle school teacher in the whole public. I've been listening intently to each week's meeting and I appreciate very much the difficulty of the decisions you all are making. I believe that the whole school committee is doing what they believe is best for our families and schools. I also believe that you are not being given complete and accurate information that you need to make these decisions. This is unsurprising to me as neither staff nor families are being provided accurate information from central office. The difference between what families and school staff are being told can only at this point be described as lies. For example, on September 3rd during the long weekend, and I'm sure due to pressure put on by central office by families in this committee, the LPS Facebook page posting infographic advertising back-to-school orientation for remote learning, which is scheduled to begin for some schools today and already happened before this meeting. The infographic also said that families should quote, "attend an orientation to learn more about your school's remote schedule, online learning program, technology distribution, attendance expectations, grading, and more." Staff have never informed about the back-to-school orientation for remote learning and most of us found out about it through social media. At that point, neither teachers nor principals in both departments had any training on the online learning program and did not yet have a plan for technology distribution, attendance expectations, or grading. As of yesterday morning, staff was told that we would be attending training on the Florida Virtual School and the Learning Management System Wednesday morning, that would've been today, at 9:00 AM, but that we did not have logged in to DFC yet. Admin got preliminary training yesterday and at 2:47 PM yesterday afternoon, after many staff members contractual day is over, my principal received an email letting us know that we would not be trained on the Florida Virtual School yet and the Florida Virtual School had not yet provisioned LPS teachers and students and didn't have us in the system. This means that as of today, a week before the start of school for kids, staff has not been trained in using the online learning system. At the same time, central office has promised parents that we'll be able to tell them about the learning system in orientation meetings that began at 5:30 this evening. In short, Mr. Public Administration is throwing principals and educators under the bus. Schools are being set up to share information with parents that we quite simply do not have. A few weeks ago, I was horrified to hear that Mr. Dillon said on the radio, the UTL president, Paul Georges, was making role teachers quote mentally unstable. At this point, I'm beginning to feel mentally unstable due to the gas writing from district administration. Parents are being told one story, school staff is being told almost nothing such as that our raises were frozen this year, which we found out when we got our paychecks today, and this committee is being assured that everything is under control. It is not. I think we all understand that this time is unprecedented. Everyone involved in education right now, administration, school staff, and families, deserve some grace. That being said, in order to be gracious with each other, we need honesty and we need trust. By passing the buck to individual schools, central office is throwing distrust between families and schools, and I believe that this is going to last for years. Now, more than ever, families and schools need to be a team. Role is a strong, proud community and we need to stand together in honesty, integrity, and transparency to do what is best for our kids. Additionally, and this is related to facilities, it was reported at last week's school committee meeting that all windows in schools are functional and have screens. As of yesterday afternoon, the window in my second floor classroom does not have a screen. It has been this way for over a year and I've reported it at least three times. It is also my understanding that the city manager has known since July that the UTL will be demanding a third-party inspection of the school's HVAC systems and that the state had earmarked money for schools to pay for inspections and remediations for HVAC, meaning that this request would not impede on city funding. With that knowledge, it is frankly terrifying that the city manager refuses to have our schools inspected. While sanctioning these inspections may not be in the control of the school committee as we discussed, as you discussed last week, it is within the school committee's jurisdiction to make safe and appropriate decisions given this knowledge. What does the city know about our schools that they don't want public? If everything is fine and it doesn't affect our budget, why not do the one thing that teachers have explicitly said would make us far more comfortable going into the building? Role families, role teachers, and this committee deserve the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. So, tonight, what you have, uh, on the visual here is our real-time dashboard that we monitor, uh, for school opening. Those of you that were on the committee last year, this may look familiar to you, it's the school opening dashboard that we use each year to get to school opening. Uh, the areas and the categories, however, are different based on the COVID-19 context we find ourselves in for this year's school opening. Dr. Gillery shared this with you before, previously, this is the updated dashboard as of today. Dr. Gillery and Dr. Hall will take you through this in their respective areas of leadership, and we stand for questions from the committee following the presentation. You have before you, Mr. Mayor, two items, a facilities update and a school reopening update. It would make the most sense, we believe, to share with you interchangeably throughout one presentation so you can get a full update on school opening in both areas, if that works well for the committee.
Sure, do we have hard copies of this though? No.
No, this is the electronic dashboard that's in front of you here, it's, uh, real-time, up to the minute. This, uh, the facilities report, Dr. Hall, uh, printed out to you, uh, again, real-time, up to the minute, uh, we'll walk you through it. There's, um, in order to give you the most updated information, this seemed to be the best path forward given the frequency of our meetings.
Okay, sure.
Walk you through it. The big point here is obviously the areas of concern of greatest are coded red, the areas that we're ready to go as of today are coded green, yellow is areas that we have confidence in, may not be ready today, have confidence in, the areas of concern are the red, but Dr. Hall and Ms., Dr. Gillery will walk you through each of those areas for presentation.
All right, if you just go, you, so you're gonna go line by line and just kind of explain?
We can.
Okay.
All right, good evening, school committee. Uh, this again is, as Dr. Boyd said, one that you've seen before, um, and it, I understand that it's, it is extremely difficult to read, but I think the essence of what Dr. Boyd has shared is that each of our categories, we have our principals, our school leaders coding real-time, um, so this was downloaded as of, I think, around six o'clock tonight, so you get a sense of where school leaders are coding their buildings. Um, so starting at the top, um, we have basically, the bullet says instruction begins on day one, so sort of the first category, um, that you're looking at here are instructional materials and supplies. Um, the, uh, section that you, the first line that you see that's all yellow or crossed, that's basically the technology devices, the computers that are being presently deployed. Um, plans are in place, schools are actually receiving those, elementary schools actually began receiving those today, so as principals actually get those in their buildings, get them inventoried, you'll see these actually go to green, so these are actually under deployment, uh, right now, uh, for that category. Um, then you have items on here like instructional, uh, supplies available, Eureka math books, those types of consumable materials, uh, working through as well, the caulking, caulkins writing kits, science kits, those types of things. Um, the next, um, large area of instructional supports that you see that are yellow, um, are 504s, IEPs, those types of, um, um, information there, and so what that basically means is that our, our teachers, once they have their rosters, then they will receive access to it, so this is the reason that they're not green as of yet, so once teachers have their rosters, then the appropriate access will be granted, uh, for those to, to be able to read their 504s and their IEPs. Um, finalizing the master schedules, uh, again, are, is coded yellow as of now. Then when we get to the staffing, I'm gonna pass that over to Dr. Hall, um, but the staffing pieces here as notated, um, most are in the, uh, yellow category here. Um, we have a, uh, yellow and, um, green, we have a few reds, and what that indicates is that we do have some long-term subs, spots that we're working to fill, but I can let Dr. Hall share more about that piece. But again, when you look at the staffing, what we're doing is making sure that all of our classrooms, uh, have a teacher in place as well as, um, the appropriate supports. Dr. Hall, if you want to say more about that?
Sure, um, based on this report in general, most of the elementary schools are, uh, looking very good with maybe one or two openings that we're still processing, but certainly we'll have them filled. Uh, the middle schools, um, some of them have two to four openings, which we're very optimistic of filling those as well, and that's going on a daily basis, bringing in new candidates and screening candidates, and the principals are still interviewing people. Uh, if I could, should I address some of my other ones on the, uh, you can see, um, we're tracking issues at the Career Academy, Sullivan in Bailey in regards to, um, HVAC systems and repairs, um, you heard earlier in the summer that we had some major, uh, construction money slash projects going on that the city got funding for, and those are nearing completion, we're being told, uh, that they will be, uh, done by the start of school. Not on here is the Green Elge, which the front is being repaired, but that wouldn't necessarily stop students from going in, another entrance in the, um, Maury, um, currently has a hot water issue that'll be rectified, um, by the start of school as well.
So, what you also can note here, the next large category of red is listed under health and safety, and this area is red because of what we ask our school nurses to do is a cross-check of their, of the immunizations as they're coming in, as you all are aware. Um, this year Massachusetts is, uh, requiring all students for in-person to have their flu shots, um, so we, we've left this deliberately red until, um, those cross-checks have actually occurred. We're confident, um, that those pieces will also happen. Um, all of our schools have identified a medical waiting room or what we're calling quarantine rooms, they have spaces identified, uh, for that, um, and then the next category of red that you're seeing under health and safety has to deal with, uh, making sure that we have staff that are identified to support students, um, if there are any, uh, medical issues or such, and so, um, staff, uh, the schools, once they are fully rostered with their staff, will be able to attend to that. Um, Dr. Hall has already addressed the areas under facilities that are of note, um, and then the following, uh, then the remaining categories are transportation, parent-community relations, and then miscellaneous items like, um, making sure that all the classrooms have their, are laid out, um, that's not coded all green as yet, but there are plans to make sure that all classrooms have their desks spaced out appropriately, uh, making sure that all the recess protocols and those types of things are in place, um, as well as creating traffic patterns and those types of things in the, in the hallways. Um, so that's in essence, and we'll make sure that you all receive a hard copy of this as it presently stands and continue to share the updates, um, with you as well so that you have the real-time information.
Thank you. Is, is there any way someone can run to the office and get a hard copy of this now? This would be really helpful, this is important and, I mean, if I had keys to a computer here, call the computer, I'd do it here, but I can't.
There's, uh, we can provide you, if I can hold staff until I know what questions are asked, then I can release whatever staff member.
Well, I mean, nobody can see it, so nobody knows what their questions are right now.
Uh, we can certainly, I can have somebody run to the office if that be the lead pleasure of the committee.
Do you got, do people need a copy? Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, why don't you start since you're the cute, closest, cutest and.
I was gonna say, with the worst eyesight, so believe me, this is a challenge.
You're the closest.
So, as I'm looking at this, under instructional support, there's a shade, the second one has some red block, and this is how blind I am, but, so, the one that has the three red blocks at the end, what is that? Instructional support, second line. Future, maybe?
That one is finalizing the master schedules, um, so basically what we're wanting to do, we, we're deliberately leaving those pieces red, um, until we actually have staffing, so as Dr. Hall mentioned, we have some staffing pieces that we're looking to fill there, and until we actually have those filled, we're deliberately coding those red to make sure that we're checking in on those on a daily basis to make sure that we are locked there.
So then all the yellow ones too, so that, I mean, there are a few that are green, is, should I understand that the ones that are green, the rosters of students have been completed and been shared with teachers?
Not a hundred percent yet there, so what's happening with that piece is that we're still rolling kids into the classes, so, um, the teachers, from the principal's perspective, they know who's teaching which classes, so, um, at this point, it's now the communication of which students are actually sitting in those classrooms as well.
So the ones that are green, we know who the teachers are, they're fully staffed, the teachers.
Yep.
Um, the ones that are yellow, we are not fully staffed yet, and the ones that are red, we're more concerned about getting fully staffed?
We're more concerned there, but we are, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to secure staff for those. So again, it's, it's more of a notation for us centrally to constantly be checking in on those on a daily basis, so our principals are updating this on a daily basis, and the idea is anything that's red, um, we, we have the follow-up, we're making sure we're providing the support, so this is more or less a communication tracking tool for us at the central level.
Can I be honest, I understand what the tool is.
Yep.
I, I appreciate that, but, I mean, yeah. Um, so, but I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what it's actually tracking, so on that line, we're not tracking actual school rosters, we're attach, we're, we're tracking teacher rosters.
Correct.
Okay. So, as you go down then, under staffing, what is that first one?
Complete staffing and vacant positions.
So is that different from the above staffing one?
So the one above is more about the scheduling of the students and making sure that that is rostered. Here, this is more about if I have an open spot there, whether that's a, um, a clerical, um, per. Here, this is more about if I have an open spot there, whether that's a clerical para as well, so making sure that my building is fully staffed there in that regard.
It's a different, it's a difficult difference for me to understand, but I will, we're gonna go, okay. The one under health and safety, that references the nurses, is that correct?
Correct.
So is it referencing, I'm sorry, but so it's the nurses or is it the vaccinations?
So-
That the nurses are doing?
This one is, what it actually reads there is check-in with school nurse office on student immunizations, medications and allergies.
So it's the immunizations more?
Yep.
Okay. And then two down from that, I guess there's only one, I'm most concerned obviously about the red ones.
So two down from that, you see staff identified to assist students, assist with student issues. So this is more or less, who's my point person if there's a student issue that's happening right now? And so again, many-
Specifically in regards to health and safety, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then down under students?
So again, this one has to deal with schedules. So that ties back up to the staffing piece. Again, making sure that all of the, this is more about verifying that the master schedules are in the process of actually being put into the, input into the system. So for this one, it's more or less, are the, are the master schedules in a finalized state, or are there still refinements that need to happen before we officially lock it there?
So there are some where they are complete?
Yes.
Can you tell me which ones those are?
So here we have, we have Riverside Bridge, the bridge program that's listed as complete, and we have the Wang School that's listed as complete.
So the Wang School was able to completely develop their schedule and staff it?
Yes. At this point, more, I'm 100% sure that will be set by, definitely be set by Monday.
So they're kinda like yellow-green, they're not really green?
Well, I mean, when you're looking at it from the internal aspect of it, they mean different things to us on the central side. School sides, we just wanna make sure that we're providing them the supports to get them to green in that regard.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a nuance, but I-
Yep.
Can try and live with it. Is there anything on this listing that is referencing the professional development and particularly around the Florida system?
Not on this dashboard.
Okay, will that come later?
Ms. Desmond can answer any questions that you have on that?
I can wait, that's fine, but just wanna make sure we can, so the biggest thing right now, and certainly what I'm hearing from staff, is this concern around the rosters, is the idea that nobody knows who's coming and, and the challenge of trying to prepare, whether you're remote or, you know, in school, either one, when you don't know who your students are yet. So I'm sure we'll be getting into that moment when we talk about the lottery and everything else, so. Thank you very much, and I apologize to my colleagues that I can't see better.
Ms. Phillips is also available, any questions on the lottery, the enrollment lottery, and how that process is through from Friday on to get that information out to schools and families?
Ms. Dar, I'm just gonna go right down the line. Ms. Darney?
I thank you, I'm gonna talk in more broad terms because I really can't read that at all, even with my glasses on. So I'm gonna go back to the idea of the rosters. So how many schools have the rosters? How many schools the principals know who the students are and the teachers are beginning to work on their class lists?
So is your question of, if it's more about the enrollment lottery, Ms. Phillips can share that with you, more specifically about rosters. Dr. Gillery, Dr. Gillery?
I think it's both, because we're talking 75% of our students are gonna be doing remote, 25% are gonna be in-person. So I'm just trying to get a sense, eight days out. I mean, I heard your questions were specific to, the Wang and the Bridge came up. Are those the only two schools that currently have the students in place?
So for the, for the rostering aspect of it, for accurate class schedules, I believe is what that one refers to, which means that their, their schedule is essentially locked, are pretty, pretty set at this point with that. As far as the rostering is concerned, I know that schools are still receiving students in their classes, so I'm not going to say that 100% are fully rostered at this moment because that would be an inaccurate statement. But I think based on the lottery, the number of schools that have received their students, those pieces are now being, have been fed to principals who are now working with their teachers to develop those class lists.
So if you can't say 100%, what percent would you say?
That I couldn't-
So you don't know how many schools have their rosters?
I would, well, all of the students, schools that have received their, their students, I mean, all of them have, but to say that they're at 100% capacity with that right now, I'm not gonna say that.
So have all parents been informed regarding their student placements?
Ms. Phillips?
So 75% of families who wanted in-person were informed. They were informed on Friday, and then there was the long holiday weekend.
Can you speak up? I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Sure. They were informed on Friday, and then there was the long holiday weekend. The principals had the opportunity to look at their rosters, look at the students who, who were assigned to their school. And they've spent the last day determining their full capacity for the building, how many more seats they can allow in each grade, in each class that they had designated. In some cases, they made adjustments, so maybe they said 20, 20 kindergarteners. We filled it to 75%. And then the principals looked and said, okay, well, I can take three more kindergartners, but I can take six more first graders. So that's where we're at right now. The staff right now are preparing letters to go out up to 90%. Again, we just keep that small margin for any adjustment that needs to be made because since the capacity is so tight, every person who is assigned needs to be fully accurate. And so since Friday, since the 75% assignment, that allowed us the opportunity for principals to let us know if someone had been placed in the general population that should be in a sub-separate, so that then would open up a space. In some cases, a student might have been assigned in sub-separate but had transitioned to general ed, so we had to make that adjustment. So the last two days have been making adjustments to make sure particularly our students with IEPs, 504s, homeless or English learners were accurately coded and got the space that, that, you know, is prioritized, not only from an equity lens, but also some legal aspects of that.
So if I could just follow up with that, so if 75% of the parents have heard, does that mean 25% haven't heard?
100% have heard. If you're on a waitlist, you were told you're remote as of right now. But there is a chance you can still be in-person and you will likely hear next week. By tomorrow, we anticipate to fill to 100%. But again, as parents tell us, I'd like to go remote, that opens up a space. So there might be a small percentage after tomorrow still being filled, but I'd say 98, 99%
By tomorrow?
Should be set by tomorrow.
Okay. And only those parents who change their mind would open up another spot that somebody who's waitlisted could then find out. But by, by the end of the day tomorrow, 98, 99% of our parents should know.
Right.
And then I, just if I could go back to Dr. Gillery, I'm sorry. When do you think that you could comfortably say 100% of our schools will have their rosters? The principals will be able to divvy out the student lists and do the scheduling. You're not comfortable to say any percent tonight, but when do you think that you would be expecting that they would have that?
So I think what you've just heard from Chief Phillips is once you have your rosters with that piece, then that, that coincides or dovetails with that. So that's why I was not saying 100% at this moment because the enrollment piece right now is ongoing.
So that would then coincide with, by the end of the day tomorrow, our schools should have a pretty clear sense of who's coming?
Who's coming and who's sitting in which seat.
And then just one last follow-up, you had mentioned that, you know, the dashboard is updated daily by the principals. Is that changed at all by central office staff, or it's just only principals are touching for their schools?
So principals, principals touch for their school. If I go in and I make an adjustment, I let principals know, here's the adjustment that I'm making, then you change it back. If there's a concern here, and you send me a follow-up email. So that's, that's any interplay in that regard. So it's myself and the, and the principals.
Thank you.
Mr. Howie, any questions?
I'm good right now, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go right down the line, yeah. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'm really wondering why this report isn't in our packet electronically. And I would have liked to, as the mayor said, I would have liked to have had a hard copy. Kind of concerning, but moving on. Were the people that are, the students who are gonna be getting into class, into, into the classroom, are they all the SPED or are all of them from SPED or ESL or homeless? Or are they regular ed kids also accepted?
So they are, homeless students are regular education students. So the students with IEPs, I believe almost all of them who wanted in-person have an in-person seat. 504s as well, almost everyone, not everyone, but we're working on, on, you know, making sure that whatever accommodations they're to receive, that they get them. McKinney-Vento, the sheltered, the higher priority McKinney-Vento, I believe all were placed. The doubled up McKinney-Vento students were not all placed. So those are students who are living with other families. But it depends on your grade level. There were a couple of grades and classrooms where students with zero points, right? Zero points mean you didn't have any other priorities. They actually did end up getting rostered. But I would say that the vast majority of students had some level of point, whether that was .25 or higher.
If you had to put a number on those that did make it in from regular ed, what number would you say that number is?
So you mean non-priority, because the kids are, they're still regular ed.
50, 75, is it 100, is it 20?
Are you referring to non-special education, or are you saying non-weighted priority when you say regular?
Right, none of those, just regular ed?
Non-weighted priority?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't be able to give you that answer at my fingertip just because every single grade and classroom, we have to go, go through. I could get that number for you, but I just don't have it.
And I understand, it's a moving target too. I'm sure the number keeps changing, I'm sure. I have one other question pertaining to professional development. I'm hearing a lot of negativity from a lot of teachers in terms of what is being offered to them up, at least up till today. And I'm wondering when or how, how much training have our teachers gotten pertaining to the Florida Virtual Assessment?
Ms. Desmond?
So the Florida Virtual program needed to be created for Lowell because every school district that enters into an agreement with that company, they have to actually provision the product so that it's custom to the school district that is going to be using it. That takes seven to 10 days for that to happen. So once we were able to facilitate a PO, the company then started the provisioning. Before the provisioning happened, the Department of Ed, as I've shared before, did an RFP for these virtual companies and then shared them with districts in Massachusetts. Florida Virtual had two professional developments scheduled for districts in Massachusetts that entered into an agreement. One was today on the learning management system, and one is tomorrow on Florida Virtual courses to be able to explore the courses. If our, if we were provisioned in time, our teachers would have been able to participate in that. So when we had the information, I shared it with principals that this was a potential professional development that our teachers would be able to participate in. Unfortunately, because we were not provisioned by today, our teachers could not participate in that particular professional development. However, we've been given custom professional development from the company. It's been shared with our principals today. Our, our courses have been provisioned, so our teachers will be able to use what's called on-demand courses that they will be able to participate in and do exploratory work in. And then the company is going to have Friday and next Tuesday available for just Lowell, so we're not going to be mixed in with other, other districts like we would have been today and tomorrow to answer any questions the teachers have after doing these exploratory lessons within the PD that they've shared with us. So hopefully tomorrow, our teachers will be able to get into these professional development sites, start exploring, get a good understanding of the learning management system and the Florida Virtual courses, depending on their level. So there's, there's one demo for grades K to five teachers, and then another demo for the six to 12 teachers, because the look is a little different in those courses based on, you know, what's appropriate for children. And then, as I said, as they're, you know, exploring these courses during the PD day tomorrow, they'll be able to take notes, same on Friday, take notes with any questions they might have or whatever, and then be able to participate in the custom sessions that the company is offering us. So that's the plan. It actually is more PD than we would have gotten if we only participated in the hour and a half today and then the hour tomorrow. So ultimately, we'll end up having more PD, but it is not what was originally hoped for over a week ago. But again, it was presented as this is, this is the plan, but until we actually knew when our course would be, our, our district would be provisioned and we'd have the Florida Virtual system and access to it, we didn't know for sure what we would be able to participate in. So I wanted to also clarify that because it sounds like that was one of the questions the caller had as well, is sort of why didn't we have the opportunity, so.
Right, right. You know, as an educator, my concern is that basically all of the faculty that learned how to teach kids in a, in a classroom have to throw that book out. And they have to have a new book, and how little time they have to prepare that new book for our kids. And that's what I'm concerned about, is like, are they going to be ready? Will they work hard at it? Absolutely. Will they try their best? Absolutely. But that's very, very, very stressful for our faculty, and I'm concerned about that part of it. I think we need to make sure that whatever professional development is gonna be given to our teachers, that they're getting as much as we can possibly give them to support them in their, in their new way of teaching. It's, it's just, I am so grateful that I retired because I don't know how I would be handling that. And it's very, very, very disconcerting to me that, that I'm getting a lot of calls, that we haven't had boo about it yet, we haven't heard this about this. I don't know what we're gonna be doing here, and that could be just in the individual building, it could be that the principal didn't share with that, but it's, it's very, there are high-stress level all around, I think. And so I think we've gotta make sure that they're as prepared as possible. It's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is it, with the virtual learning school and the trainings that were supposed to go on, was the delay in us being provisioned, did it have anything to do with us not having an agreement with our UTL?
The delay was a delay in terms of when our purchase order was ultimately approved to when we could get these uploaded. So the, yeah, the earlier we would have purchased it, the earlier we would have gone through that process, the earlier they could have got a provision. We brought it to you, I believe, August 29th, I wanna say, if I have the right date, 26th, is that what you're saying? Oh, okay. It was something around there. As soon as we had the PT approved by the committee, we've worked daily to move to get the purchase order approved. Then once the purchase order's approved- Then, once the purchase order's approved, then we moved through with Ms. Desmond. But there was no delay subsequent to the school committee's action.
Thank you.
Just let Mr. Dillon finish up.
I'm sorry to interrupt. All right, so.
How long did that process take?
Just let Mr. Dillon finish up, and then we'll get to you.
I'm just wondering, under what scenario would we have been able to train the last two days with the training that is provided that we were supposed to have?
It would have had to come to you sooner, and then the purchase order approved sooner. We would have had to start the process with Florida Virtual sooner, and you remember the number of conversations that we had here on the floor about it prior to getting to that decision. All of that would have had to been expedited far, far quicker.
Including the agreement with the teachers' union on whether that was something we were gonna use?
That would have been part of accelerating it.
It would have been helpful. All right. Thank you. That's it. I just wanted to also ask about gymnasium usage. I guess feedback that I'm getting, it seems almost like the alternative to using the gymnasium, maybe that we're coming up with is like classrooms that are usable, which seems, I don't know, are we still going with gymnasiums not having windows? Doesn't allow us to use them as a space?
Yeah, for our gymnasiums that have exterior entrances that can substitute as windows, meaning they can open up to the outside, those gymnasiums are usable. Gymnasiums that are completely interior with no opening to the outside, at this point right now, we're not planning to utilize them.
Okay. I just, I guess I'd encourage us to maybe consider the alternative, because obviously, you know, outdoor activity time is gonna be best right now, but when it can't happen, it seems like the only other option is to use class, you know, classrooms that we are using, which is, I mean, gotta be impossible to have any type of lesson. I don't know, it seems counterproductive to what we're trying to do with gymnasiums, they're big open spaces, and I feel like we could utilize them a little bit better. But I'd appreciate if you guys looked into that.
Yeah, we can certainly investigate that, and we may want to reassess that, particularly as the inclement weather.
Sure.
If I could, Mr. Dakota, I don't think I answered one of your questions about why this couldn't be uploaded. If we uploaded this on Friday, it would have been the same exact information largely that you received on Wednesday night. Remember, we closed out Wednesday night nearing 10 o'clock. This would have been uploaded on Friday. It wouldn't, it would have been inaccurate at this point. So there's not a way to upload it electronically to be dynamic. The way it comes up into the system would have been a PDF. We can err on that side next time. The error on this side today was to give you the most accurate, most up-to-date, because that was my understanding of the reason for the meeting.
Well, okay. I just think that it could have been put on our website that has our packets, all packets typically every week, and that could have been added today when this document was created.
We can certainly upload it. This is accurate up to 6 o'clock tonight, we can upload it. If that's helpful.
All right. Just let Mr. Dillon finish with his last question, I'll get right to you.
Thanks, I have one more. Do we have, maybe Dr. Boyd, if we were to go into an all-remote learning environment, what sort of options would that give our custodial staff, cafeteria staff, and maybe some of the other positions like that? Would they have a role? Can we find a role for them?
As of right now, we're not offering out remote opportunities for cafeteria or custodial. We're not aware of what a remote role would look like in those particular positions, which we've communicated back to the representative units.
Sure. All right, so that would, if I was in one of those positions, an all-remote scenario would be something I would be very worried about, I would imagine. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Glock?
Thank you. So I'm just curious, what are some of the professional development focuses? What have they been over the last few days?
Ms. Desmond?
So most of the principals have done training on various areas. So for example, the flipped classroom, and what that model is all about, what it looks like, some of the tools that you would utilize. There have been various SEL PDs that have happened. There have been PDs on Google Classroom, which is something that we're gonna be using along with Virtual. We've talked about that, that those links can be embedded into the learning modules, Screencastify, Seesaw, so all of the products that we have been using in the spring that help to support learning virtually, so that we can, you know, embed those into our current, what we're going to be using. Again, Florida Virtual was considered a tool in the toolbox of teachers, so that's one element. There are lots of other things that will be used for teachers and things that they're comfortable with, because we've used them in the spring. So there's just been more training on those tools, so that people have things ready to go for the start of the school year.
So I just want to point out that that seems like really useful professional development ahead of a virtual start for 75% of our teachers and students. So while the learning management system has not yet been a part of it, but it sounds like, in fact, we're getting a little bit of an above and beyond with having some Lowell specific information, and it doesn't sound like it was anyone's fault that the professional development on the learning management system didn't happen according to the hopeful plan that we would be provisioned in time, that I hope that our teachers are really taking advantage of the professional development that they have been receiving. I certainly have received a number of emails with, again, I understand the frustration. I've been there, too. But this is important, what has been focused on the last few days. And so while we can all walk in and say, "I'm frustrated," I hope that there is real effort and energy going in to making the best use of the tools that need to be used on top of the learning management system or along with it.
And I just want to mention that the Florida Virtual training modules that we've been given to utilize, they're, they can be utilized anytime, they're called on-demand modules, and we're going to have them for a year. So you, the hope would be, in my mind, versus going to one training for an hour and a half, would be to watch the video, maybe go back to it if you're struggling with something, and just be able to have it in our library so that we can continually rely on it, which was not something that we were going to have originally. So I think that's the benefit. Obviously, everything has pluses and minuses. But I think the benefit of us being able to have this video library now and be able to utilize it and go back to it when we might have questions in the future is a great resource.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate hearing about what else is going on, because again, the learning management system is one tool that we're using, and there will be a learning curve, and we're all going to learn as parents, as students, as teachers. And I don't think anyone is expecting that on day one, we're going to have it 100%, because there isn't anyone that is going to have anything 100% going into this year. But I do appreciate that a lot of work is going on every day to get us ready, as prepared as we can under these circumstances. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just to be clear, so are we kind of just discussing all of the back-to-school at this point? I mean, we were kind of limited by the grid before, but I know we've gone a lot of different directions. I don't want to ask my questions if you're gonna be presenting other stuff.
Sorry, just trying to connect with the DPW about, they were prepared to share out a little bit on facilities, so I just wanted to make sure they were still available to you. Can you share again, Ms. Martin?
I just wanted, like, as other topics have come up from other people, I have some other additional questions, but I don't know if you're gonna be presenting more about the lottery or about the professional development. Is that still forthcoming, or should we just ask?
My understanding is this, that the committee wanted an opportunity to engage questions. We have the one visual, this is how we track school opening, whatever be the questions, we're prepared to answer those questions.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't want to get ahead of what you were presenting.
The only additional is facilities report. That was the communication that I was having with the manager. If you would like to hear from the DPW commissioner, she's prepared to call in, but I just wanted to give you that heads up, she might not be prepared and available all night long.
I'd leave it to the mayor. Do you want me to hold the next round of questions?
We're still on facilities, so we'll stay on topic with facilities, but so what is.
Maybe have that presentate, or that call now?
We can do that.
And I can hold my questions until after.
Are we still on school facilities? Are we still on school facilities?
Yeah, you have school, you have school facility, school reopening, they all combine into one, whether it's professional development, enrollment, facilities, staffing, it's all our school opening. Right now, we have the Christine Clancy, who's the commissioner at DPW, she's available to share out. We also have the report, if you'd prefer to hear from her directly. I just want to make sure we don't have her on hold all night. I don't know that she's gonna be available all night.
Let her go. That's fine.
I'd like to just do a brief introduction on it. On page two of the packet, I just wanted to highlight that the daily incident rate went down to 1.18 this week for the city Lowell. That came out at 5:00 PM, and we went from 4.2 code yellow to 2.4 green again. So we had been green almost all of August, and went to yellow briefly, and then back to green again. On the next page, just to highlight some things for you, every school, we have a fogger available for every school. We still do have some on order that are scheduled to be delivered later this week and early next week. The facilities team, led by Mr. Underwood, is tracking the deliveries. There has been one stumbling block with deliveries. Not all the air purifiers are on hand now, but the city and Mr. Underwood have been in touch with Home Depot Pro to make sure that they are delivering in time, so that we can have them in each and every classroom. If that doesn't look like it's gonna happen, we'll certainly immediately update you. On the next page, one highlight is, is we've identified a need to order some more smaller-sized masks for the younger kids, so not all of those are on hand. We do have an abundance of masks, but we felt the need to order some smaller-sized ones. So those are on the way as well. And the following slide, it has the available seats, as we've been going on, week to week, and additionally, it has staffing considerations. Last week, we moved that to positive, and that was a result of having the posting and staffing procedure. And again, we have that as positive. I do believe we only have, we're the only ones in the Commonwealth who have a purely opt-in model for teachers in the classroom, and I believe that will pay dividends, and we are still aggressively attempting to fill the remaining seats. But in some, almost every single teacher slot in the elementary schools is filled, and we have under a handful left in some of the middle schools that we're focusing on. One of the advents of the last week, before Ms. Clancy gets on the phone, is she's been good about contacting me every day to try to identify which rooms at every school that we are using. So as of today, we have those all identified for the city, and it's my understanding they're gonna go through and do a visual of all those rooms. Additionally, they asked yesterday that we add the quarantine room on last night, so you can see we're making progress on this, because this is a live present, it's just been updated as of late at 5:00 today. So we're still working on that. That was a request of yesterday. But that coordination that she's led has been very helpful, and Alex McGee has been great, too, in acquiring supplies and the purifiers for us. So I guess unless the committee has questions, I think Ms. Clancy's available.
Ms. Desmond's ready to call her in, so she can be on the line. She'll share out with you, and I imagine she'll answer any questions as well.
There was one other thing, too, for the water. Just so the committee knows, we're ordering bottled water for the kids for breakfast and lunch. They'll also be encouraged to bring their water, but we're getting foot pedal machines, so you won't have to touch the handle on any sort of dispenser, which we think will reduce risk as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Blasey and school committee members. Thank you for the update so far to facilities. I just want to provide some more information on where we stand with the DPW update. So, and there was an update presented to city council last night, so this is a similar update, but just to go over some of those items. So we are following Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidelines, the SUC recommended guidelines for reopening. And just to show you the level of effort that we've put in, we are tracking a lot of this effort, both time, material, and any parts replacement costs, because a lot of these costs are associated with COVID and ineligible for CARES reimbursement. So to date this summer, DPW staff has put in 3,600 hours working on these buildings, primarily in the focus of HVAC ventilation. Of that, hundreds of hours has been overtime. I really give credit to our department, Lands and Buildings Department, they have been working nights, weekends, they worked Labor Day last weekend to bring the wellness school waiting school fully online. And it really, I mean, we're working, it is a seven-day effort. To date, we have spent about $650,000 on parts, replacement motors, materials, shelters. $400,000 of that is air purifiers. And a lot of that is eligible under the CARES. Really, I mean, we haven't, at least from my understanding, we haven't spent this type of money in the schools outside of capital in years. We're also tracking the labor, because that is something potentially can be reimbursed in totality. We're tracking right now $800,000 putting into the schools, of which $570,000 is eligible for reimbursement, to show the level of effort of all the work that's going into the schools. So as of right now, a critical component of the HVAC system to carpool schools is exhaust fans. I think in the last week's report, I indicated that about, at the base, about 50% of fans were working when we started this. It actually is probably closer to 25% to 40%, because as we were making those, that initial assessment, we were making some minor repairs, replacing bearings or belts. And then we started just more recently, in past months, getting into the harder replacements or repairs, or difficult replacements or repairs. So where we are today was about 75% of all rooftop exhaust fans working. And of those, we have, actually today, we have 11 schools where we have rooftop exhaust fans fully functional. I can list them, Bridge Academy, Career Academy, Laura Lee, Lincoln, Freshman Academy, Moody, Lori, Riley, Chauncey, Wayne, and Washington. And all of these are, we coordinate daily with Rick Underwood and the school department to go over, when we bring these, all these exhaust fans online, the custodians are in the school to also see that they can visually inspect that these are working. And we are continuing, so that leaves about 25% of the roof fans to be worked on, awaiting on parts, and as those parts come in, we're replacing those fans. So our goal is to have 100% of exhaust fans working before, by the start of school. And we will continue to work overtime, we think, to get that, to have that completed. Another item I think that's important to talk about is this great school or classroom readiness inspection. So all the rooms have been identified about, and that includes all the classrooms. I'm also walking the bathrooms and checking the quarantine rooms. And so I, myself and Deputy Director Finance, Alex McGee, we're working, we're walking these ourselves, we're the custodians, and what we're doing is we're checking that at least one window is operational. We're trying to, if possible, have all windows operational in the classroom, and we're finding that a lot are, but there are a couple rooms where we just have to have one or two operational. Checking to see if there is a event, if there is a unit or some other vento unit in that room, to make sure it is operational or needs re-service. And then lastly, checking if there's any other ventilation in the room, and if it is, if there is ventilation, if it's on. So that's something that's happening in the classrooms, the bathrooms, and we're tracking that, and that is being shared and now with a daily time, daily with the school department. Another update is the HECA air purifiers, and I think that that is something, that is going to be in all classrooms and in other spaces that are used, that is being tracked. I know as. I know as Dr. Hall mentioned, we have 1,000 orders, and we have about, I think, we're still, our goal is to receive all of them before school. So we've recently, just as today, contacted the vendor to make sure that is happening, as it is supposed to. Those are being put, distributed to the classrooms, and those really are important to be, simulate some of the filters. I think in the, a lot of the recent literature, there are articles, you've read about MERV-14 filters. A lot of our schools, we have older HVAC, HVAC systems, and especially the unit ventilators in the classrooms, who really can only go to a MERV-8. And so these units will really simulate a MERV-13. They will filter really down through, you know, I think it's point through micron, filtering out all of the dust, allergens, pollen, odors, bacteria. So that is, I think, really just a critical component of our pollen. Another update is this third-party HVAC assessment. And that is something that, so we've contracted with Garcia, Gruisberg, and Duzey, consulting engineers. They're on the high school project, working with Perkins Eastern. And they've just recently provided that report to us, and that is something that is being reviewed by myself and the manager. But we are looking at that right now, just to, so that report is really just a filter recommendation and a recommendation on how we can optimize the ventilation across our schools.
Thank you.
So the couple more updates I have is, those being flushed out, I believe, that was mentioned in the report. It was discussed last night at City Council, but also last week. So per Dusie's recommendations, we want to flush out the bill, the building as best possible with air. That is beginning tomorrow, with, we had a call today between the School Department and DPW to make sure that is happening. And so what we're doing is opening windows, doors, any doors that, in classrooms, turning on all exhaust fans, making sure that the systems are set to, I guess, a full winter mode, so that is opening all the dampers in the building. So really, we can maximize the air that is being brought in and out of the building. That will, that is going to happen starting tomorrow, for the start of school. And then once school starts, that's something too, that we'll be doing before school starts and after school starts. And that's part of the recommendations of Dusie. And then as far as the others, there's many others, I mean, obviously, the HVAC systems and ventilation systems, that really is our priority, is something we're working on constantly. There are some other updates that we are tracking too. Well, we, the Morris School, that water heater will be installed hopefully by Friday. So it'll be a headed schedule. And then we have the ongoing roof and boiler projects that we're tracking. And there's other, and fire escape projects were recently completed. They were completed at Moody, Malloy, Greenhouse, Cardinal O'Connell, and Washington. And that's, that's the update I have, I don't know if there's any questions?
Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Sure, yeah, thank you. I was really wondering if the memo that we received, like, that information is available to the public? Is it on?
Uh, yes. This update, this document was uploaded, this actually is a document that was provided to the City Council. Oh, sorry, if I've lost the update that is in front of you?
Uh, yeah, the memo, I mean, it was sent, yeah, sent to us from Alex McGee. With all the information you just, you just went over. I was just wondering if people wanted to view it, where could they find it? Because it's a lot of good information.
I believe it's uploaded to the City Council site, we can upload it to this one too, if that be the desire.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, thank you. Great job, thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the report that you submitted to us. We, I, we have 25% of the ventilation units, and then your statement is that the remaining units are anticipated to be delivered. Is the vendor actually guaranteeing that we're getting these next week?
Ms. Clancy?
Are you still there, Christine?
Yeah.
I'm, yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing, I mean, this-
Can you repeat that, he's talking about the air purifier delivery tracking?
That is happening, that Rick Underwood is leading that effort, and all of them are being distributed and starcoded, and will be distributed to the schools. As far as the tracking, the tracking of the air purifiers, that is something that, I mean, we're, we are coordinating with Rick Underwood.
I believe he's, he's referring to those being shipped, those-
Oh, so they, yeah, so they were actually expected, so we ordered these about three or four weeks ago. I remember it was right beginning of August, and so we were expected to have received them already. So I guess they're delayed. And so we, we should be receiving them really this week. And so that's why we're really on them to, to have them shipped, they should be here. So we are following up with Home Depot, Serve Pro, who is the, uh, Home Depot, to confirm that that is happening.
Thank, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Howie?
Just have one quick question, they keep, in this report, it says we have 30 schools. I, I went out last Sunday, counted 28. If you want to count the adult education, then I come up with 29. But I'm just curious why, when I see this report, the one school I haven't heard mentioned at all in this report, and I think it's one of our worst schools condition-wise, is the Robinson. Can anybody give me an update on the Robinson, or the boiler, and how that place is going? Because I can't believe it's not mentioned in this report one time, when so many schools are mentioned.
Sure, Christine, do you have an answer on the Robinson?
Uh, I mean, in the report, so we are, we are tracking all schools, and so as far as the Robinson, we are, I mean, we are, what quarter are you talking about?
Well, maybe the boil, are we doing the boiler system over at the Robinson?
So all, we do have a contract with a consultant, and all boilers are being serviced. As far as the exhaust fans, we are working to make all those 100%, 100% operational. Compressors are running, we are going to make sure that is also serviced. I mean, we have, we do have a breakdown for every single school. As far as the boilers, I believe they are operational, but we are also, certainly, we, as part of preventative maintenance, we go around this time of year and service all boilers. And that is underway.
All set.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Christine, one quick question too, the Adult Ed would, would definitely working over at the Adult Ed building?
Yes, so at the Adult Ed, we have fans on order right now, and those are actually mostly shipped. The remaining pieces are coming in tomorrow or Friday, so those will be installed this week or over the weekend, the exhaust fans, especially to make sure we have them in the bathrooms. And then there was a recent, recently, I work at a compressor, that was, that work was completed this morning.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate all the work that people have been doing to get these buildings up to speed.
You going down with Christine?
I do, I want to ask if she can just give us an overview of how we stand today, and her confidence that we're going to be ready for opening in eight days. So she mentioned exhaust fans, 10 or 100% functional.
75%.
The HEPA air filters, so there are different pieces that are done. We're looking for 100% for all our buildings by next week. For the HEPA air filters, the exhaust fans, all those pieces that are so essential, what is her confident, you know, what are the percentages that are completed?
Yeah, last night, she thought we're 100%, but go ahead, just-
So we're tra, we're working, and I say we're working day and night, I mean, we're working extended hours. And there are a lot of moving parts, all the exhaust fans, is there, is critical. Looking at the, I guess, the air purifiers, so our goal is, is in eight days, we will have everything done. If for some, even there are some areas of some schools that are not open, for example, if there is a bathroom, or then we just won't, we'll say that area is not open. But we, our goal is to have everything open by next week. And we're working as many people as we can, as many hours, we're day and night right now. So our goal, we are, that's our target.
Sure, Ms. Darney?
Uh, thank you very much for that. My final question has to do with the third-party HVAC assessment, because I know we've certainly heard a lot of pushback from our union that they wanted this, a third-party vendor. So could she speak specifically to what this third-party assessment did for the city? I know they gave us some recommendations, and are we moving on those recommendations? Thank you.
Sure. So this, in the third-party HVAC assessment, they walked buildings throughout the school, and they're making recommendations of inventorying all the HVAC equipment in these buildings. And they're making recommendations on how to optimize the ventilation within those rooms. So optimizing is like making sure that they're functioning. And they're also providing recommendations for preventative maintenance that we're working on now, but also that's something that's going to have to continue throughout the school year. And there also was a filter assessment, and so there's, like I said, there are articles that said you might use MERV-13, but MERV-13 filters cannot be used in all HVAC systems, especially older systems. So that's where it was really critical to size those, these units. And so there is also a filter recommendation. And that is, so when we purchase filters, which all filters have been purchased, and is also expected to arrive and be installed before school. Though that, that was part of the assessment to make those recommendations. If you use too thick of a filter, or too high of a, higher rating of a filter, that could actually prevent air from going through the HVAC systems, which is what you really, really need, or else it's not functioning. The report also made some other recommendations, they, the report, that, or their assessment is HEPA air purifiers, how that is also something that can be used, and to help simulate some of the purification in the classroom, in the air.
Mr. Howie?
Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Howie?
I got one last, one last question to Christine. Christine, you're doing a great job. I know how old you are, and I know you're a civil engineer, and I'm glad you took over the job. A lot of people I know in DPW are very happy with you. But if you could touch on the Collins Report, they keep telling, we're the school committee, we're not the City Council. And the Collins Report says that you guys should hire about 22 new people, HVAC, plumbers, electricians, et cetera. And we're still doing it with people from Lands and Buildings. I pointed the finger at them a couple of years back, that it was their fault, and they're not smart enough. I just don't believe you have enough help. Even at the DPW, I believe you're down about six people. So if you could touch that Collins Report, just a little bit tonight, did they hire many people?
Sorry, can we, we just need to stay on point on opening school. I know that, what the report, and I know what you're looking for, but just to stay on point for opening the school. We can get into how many people we need to hire later though.
Well, I, I just don't like the school committee being pointed at all the time, like this is our problem, ma'am, that's all.
Oh, I know people, it's definitely city maintenance that needs to be-
City councils, that's what I want to hear, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, I just want to stay on point with her. Okay, any other questions for, all right, thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Ms. Clancy. I do want to recognize, it's been extraordinary collaboration with the City Manager's Office. As you can see, even exchanging messages here, there is a constant communication to make sure that we are ready. If you find at any time that we're not in a particular classroom or a particular school, then we will make the decision to close down a classroom or a school, because safety has to be our top priority. So we're hearing, again, the same message that you've heard, we continue to hear, and it is regular collaboration, I believe multiple times per day, with Dr. Hall's team across with the city, and certainly the City Manager and myself talk frequently. Everybody is on the same goal to open up our schools on schedule and to ensure safety. And we're also all on the same page, city and school district, that if it can't be done safely, we won't do it, whether that be a classroom, a school, or the district as a whole. So we're all on the same page there, marching to the same goal of September 17th not only being school opening, but safe school opening.
Thank you.
If I could correct something, sure. I guess in my effort to give you the most updated information, I clicked on the wrong month. So the COVID numbers actually went up instead of down this month. So the true numbers are 1.74 for the average daily incident rate, and we're still in yellow at 5.9 for that figure. So they actually went up instead of down. Sorry, the percent- Uh, they went, they went up instead of down. So the percent positivity last week was 1.5, and now it's 1.74. And the average daily incident rate was 4.2 yellow last week, and now it's 5.9 yellow this week.
Important indicator again, because again, those indicators, remember so far, I think it's easy to follow color coding. Red means we stop. With the, as a reminder, on the positivity rate, the threshold's 5%. So there are two separate indicators. We, again, the guidance we heard from the school committee is follow the strictest of those guidelines. So whatever one there, and in order to ensure safety, if it shows up red, that's an indicator that in person has to be questioned. If it shows up across 5%, that's an indicator. It's not that both, it's one or the other. Whatever one raises the flag first is the guidance that we're working from, from the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just come back to something I spoke about earlier, about professional development. I would be remiss if I didn't actually mention that, are the parents going to be getting what our fa, our teachers are getting for that professional development? Because they, from what I understand, they're expected to co-teach our kids. And so I think they need to have some knowledge about what they're going to be working with and what they have to do. But I think, are they being included, are they all supposed to be participating?
They are participating, is the question specifically about Florida Virtual, they'll have access as well, Ms. Desmond?
So again, the benefit of getting the modules for on-demand is we have access to them for the year, so our staff can all access them. Whereas the Department of Ed training was limited to teachers. So I think it's to our benefit to have this opportunity.
But don't, don't we think that, are we going to be not using PERS at first?
PERS are participating in professional development. I think what Ms. Desmond said is, with this adjustment, it's kind of a glass half full. So certainly, we would have liked to have done it earlier, we can't do it earlier. But one of the benefits of not doing it earlier is now PERS will have access, is that what I'm understanding?
That's right. So the training is really about how you set up your courses, how you allow students access, how you add assessments, all of the inner workings. That probably is not what paraprofessionals would be doing, that would be what teachers are doing. But because we have the modules, anybody, any of our staff can, can participate in this PD. So I think it only benefits people to have more knowledge. So our paraprofessionals would be able to participate in this PD. But the way it was offered through the Department of Ed, it was for teachers, because the expectation would be that the teachers would be doing those elements.
Okay, well, I, so I'm still confused. I'm hoping that the PERS are going to be getting some training, because they have to work with, and in collaboration with, our teachers. And if they have to do the same new process of teaching, they should get the training along with our staff.
So they will access the training that we have in-house. We have all of these modules, and anybody can access them. So everybody will have the benefit of going through those training modules. There will be elements that don't apply. So, you know, there are things that are in the training modules that paraprofessionals would not be expected to do.
No, I understand that.
But because we have the- But because we have the modules, and they're in our library, everybody can go through that process, all of it.
I think the one commitment here that we've made to everybody is nobody's going to be expected to do something that they don't know how to do. So we're going to make sure that they have the training and support for everything that they need to do. Even in this case, if it didn't happen on the day, it's still going to happen. And it still will happen in time that we can support our staff. And if for some reason we aren't able to deliver on some type of training, then we won't have the expectation that people will be able to do something they haven't been trained on. And I think that also applies to paraprofessionals. That's been our commitment across.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Thanks, ma'am. I'll try to stay a little bit more positive this time.
No, not positive.
Well, I want to start, I want to start by saying that, you know, we look at this pandemic, and what it, what it did, for me, what I seen is, number one thing, it stopped school shootings across America. Had 130 roughly school shootings before the pandemic. And right now, there's a lot of people not really positive about teachers. I will never vote against teachers, especially when I see over 300 of our teachers opt in to help us at a time when this school committee wants to go back in-person learning. So it's not too late to opt in if you're a teacher out there listening to this meeting tonight. We still need a few more of you. But we got over 300, 300 of yous. I don't have the exact number. But I'm very proud of those teachers that opt in to help us out, because we want to go in-person, and this school committee's been working hard at that. But this administration, to me, I gotta say it every week. I can't believe the job you've done with what you have, with the tools that you have. No Chapter 70 money yet. We don't know what's coming around. If we get that extra 13 million, I bet you know how to spend that. And I hope we don't forget teachers that do opt in. I know we got to take care of all of our teachers, but I think tonight's a good night to say thank you to them. And it's not too late to opt in to help us. We still need a few more. And the last thing I want to say is, or you could maybe give me an answer on this Florida Virtual PD. Am I mistaken? That was paid by a grant, correct?
Yeah, Ms. Turner, do you want to share how that grant works?
There are multiple CVRF grants. The PPNE grant, we have to specifically use it for any COVID-related costs that were not included in the budget originally. Then there's a school...
Sorry, you just got to go a little closer.
Oh, sorry. So there are multiple COVID grants. The PPNE grant, the school reopening grant, is specifically for COVID costs that were not included on the budget originally. So any, like, we couldn't put something like a paraprofessional, unless it was a para specifically hired to assist during the COVID times. The other COVID grant is the state tech grant that Ms. Desmond applied for, and it's specifically for remote learning technology type of cost. And as you know, we got the ESSER grant, but that was unrestricted, and we used that toward our budget.
I'm still not clear on that. We spent about $800,000 on this Florida Virtual, correct?
Yes.
So it's not paid by a grant? That's what I'm getting.
No, it is.
It is?
Yes, the learning management system is under the PP, under the COVID-related cost grant.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two basic areas that I just was hoping to get clarified for me. Looking first at the, at the professional development. I know, Ms. Desmond, you had mentioned that there was, you know, some of the training that's been going on. You had mentioned the flipped classroom. Can you remind me of that? Sorry.
So the flipped model, the flipped classroom model is what, so typically, when children are home, they would watch some sort of video around the subject matter. And then when they'd come into the classroom, they would do more of the hands-on work and then receive the support from the teacher. And so part of the reason for that is the level of engagement. So, you know, typically homework, the pen-to-paper sort of work, is done at the, at home after sort of experiencing the lesson in the class. And so the flipped model is a little different. You sort of experience the lesson at home, and then you come in and do the work and get the support of the teacher. So based on your learning needs. So this is a model that is, was used long before COVID. But it's a model that works well when you're not really sure if you're going to be staying in-person or not. And so that's why they focused a lot on building the teachers' understanding around what that model is and how it works, so that if students were to transition to a remote setting from an in-person setting, that transition would be easier.
Because at this point, our students are kind of all or nothing, correct? You're either in-person, or you're remote. So we're not implementing any flipped classrooms at this point?
No, it was, it was a professional development so that people understood the model and understood how it could be utilized. It was something that sort of is what we had to do in the spring, when all of a sudden we just switched.
Right, right.
So that was just one part of the professional development menu. So I was giving examples of the things that people were experiencing in their buildings throughout the day.
You know, and I'm sure, you know, as many of my colleagues, you know, we have heard concerns, you know, from teachers around the professional development. Obviously, I understand the, having to kind of backload the Florida system just based on, you know, the, the reality of how late we were to commit to it. So, you know, I can understand that. I'm encouraged that we'll be seeing that starting, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, on Friday? Will be the first?
Hopefully tomorrow. Hopefully tomorrow, teachers will have access to the training modules and can start digging in. That has been shared with principals earlier today, and that would be the hope.
Okay.
And just to go back to the flipped classroom model. So a lot of the professional development menu choices were a result of what the task force...
Recommended?
Had recommended. So that was in the task force recommendations. I just wanted to clarify that.
That part I do remember. Thank you. I, yeah, absolutely. Okay. So, you know, I think that, you know, so understanding that the Florida system will be kind of part of what's, what's kind of launching now. I know that for most of the teachers, if not every teacher that has been in contact with me, there is certainly anxiety that I think will be put to rest once they're able to kind of get into this system and see how it works and, and become familiar with it. In terms of kind of the, the level of professional development that we're offering, I know that, you know, as you had mentioned, some of the technology we're talking about, like how to use Google Classroom and, and all those. You know, my, my, what I've been hearing is that a lot of the training is really kind of teacher-led, which I understand, you know, absolutely. But it is, again, challenging for, I think, teachers to be getting this information kind of more anecdotally than in a prescribed kind of curriculum. And I think any PD is good PD, mostly. But I do think that this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this district. And I think we talked about that, you know, certainly when we first made the decision to push back, that, you know, the idea of two weeks of basically free PD with our teachers was, you know, a once-in-a-generation kind of opportunity. We have one week left of it, so I, you know, I'm certainly hoping that will, the teachers will be more satisfied with, with what they're getting, particularly again, around that anxiety with the, with the new system. So, you know, that we'll, we'll be able to track over the next week. Is there a component within the Florida system where families interact with it? You know, adults, parents, guardians? And is there a plan for that kind of training to be offered?
Yes. So parents will, can be considered, they're considered observers. And so they can go in and, to their child's account, and be able to observe the activity. They can't submit things, only the children can. But they can see what's happening. And so, you know, once we have everything loaded into our system, courses, rosters, and all of that, then we can start to look at, how do we message to families what the observer role looks like? But, you know, we have to actually have it all built out. And so, you know, it's a lot of work to build out the system internally for, from our perspective. And so, you know, just having access to it today, you know, because it just got provisioned, you know, we're working as hard as we can to get it all up and running and, you know, have everything loaded in there. So we're trying to get it all done very, very quickly.
And I appreciate that, to be clear. I, and I understand that, that across the board, everyone is in an impossible situation. So I absolutely understand and appreciate that. I just think, I think we need to be clear about what our challenges are. And I think we need to recognize that, that, you know, we, none of us have the capacity to solve all these problems. All we can do is make sure that we keep kind of grinding to improve step by step as we get closer to the start of school and ultimately, you know, for the whole year. My last question on the professional development area is recognizing that once we're off and running, there is still going to be a need for continuing professional development over the course of the year. We have pre-scheduled half-days, you know, that we've built into our schedule. Are we anticipating how we're going to use those differently now? Because of, you know, depending on kind of where we are in our adoption and mastery of these different programs?
So we don't, I don't have those planned out right now. But I think, you know, just, again, not having access to the system myself, it's hard to sort of plan out the professional development and not knowing sort of where, where people are in their learning. So just like our students, you know, we always look at, after doing some work with our students, where are they at? So I would like to get a better sense of, after people partake in the on-demand training, what are the needs? What do they have for needs? And how do we meet those needs so that people feel comfortable? So, you know, that will be a continuous process.
I think that would be great for us to kind of be able to talk about, whether it's, you know, on the floor or in a subcommittee. Because I think over the course of the year, that's going to be some of the more challenging and interesting work that, that I think will be presenting itself. In a different vein, with looking at the lottery process. So again, to confirm, basically, we're going to be at 90-something percent of families, of us, with a finalized roster list, district-wide at least. It may not have made it to teachers yet, but, okay. So could you describe for me, have we seen any responses from families in terms of appeals or questions?
So we have, we have received hardship requests from families. So, I'm sorry. Families who share that they may lose their job. That's probably one of the more common ones that we're receiving. That wasn't taken into account within the priorities, the first round of priorities. But that is a concern that we're hearing among many families. The other is that not all siblings were assigned in-person. So we have had to explain that the lottery is grade by grade, building by building. And the in-person priority, you know, the intention was to help relieve the number of students in the household. Not so much to, to enroll all of the students, you know, in the household. So that is, that is tough, you know. But, but it's, with only having 25% of seats, we, we kind of knew that we weren't going to be able to serve everyone's needs.
And I think we all, you know, recognize that, given especially the huge interest from families who were looking for in-person, that we were just not going to be able to accommodate that. Are there any areas within the district that we can say kind of right out loud now? We know that, that students who, you know, may be wait-listed, maybe, you know, waiting for more information that we just know aren't going to be functioning? I mean, I've heard, again, and it's anecdotal, so I don't have any, you know, concrete, but I think it's something we should be sharing from here. You know, that there are certain middle schools that are having challenges, that, you know, we can be honest, I think, with those, with those families about what the, what the prospects are?
Yeah, I think that, right now, the constraints of largest concern for us, Ms. Clancy spoke to some of those around the HVAC fans. She's got confidence that those are going to get built. So then, once you go down to the facilities, the next constraint is staffing. Dr. Hall, can you share the buildings of greatest concern in terms of staffing? And again, we're going to continue to work through this so that we can offer an opportunity to families. But we can share with you those that are of greatest concern tonight for staffing. Dr. Hall, can you share those areas of greatest concern for staffing right now?
Sure.
One over earlier, most of the middle schools have a few openings in the K-8s, with the exception of the WANG, which is fully staffed earlier.
Sorry, you need your, doctor, you need your, yeah, mic.
There's generally two to four openings at every middle school and more at the K-8s, with the exception of the WANG, which is fully staffed. And I believe the daily will be fully staffed by early next week as well. And the high school has quite a bit of openings in regards to science and math in particular, which are generally hard to fill.
And what happens there, Committee Member Martin, which I know you're well aware of, but for the greater community, at the secondary level, you need a full complement of teachers in order to build out a student's schedule. So whereas it would be one classroom at the elementary level, because each teacher teaches all of the classes in its one classroom at a time, what we need is we need the full complement of teachers in order to build out a roster and a schedule, as Dr. Guillory was sharing, at the secondary level. So you got to get to the full complement of teachers in order to start building out those schedules. So it's, in some ways, not completely surprising that our biggest challenge starts to come at the secondary level, where every individual teacher has an impact on the overall school roster, whereas at the elementary school, each teacher is at a classroom level. But we're continuing to work towards that. And what's, in terms of progress, Dr. Hall, daily progress? And then we're going to post out the, the long-term opportunities for external candidates. Can you take the committee and the community through that process?
Yeah, so the positions are available for anyone who wants to apply now, who's qualified and certified on school spring. We have quite a few applicants. The principals have to go through the resumes and the submissions and conduct interviews. But we are filling positions on a daily basis.
I'll send this one. Ms. Darney?
Thank you. And I did want to talk about professional development as well. I know we've talked about it quite a bit. I'd like to start by saying, I think this committee and the administration, we all set out with a very noble goal, which was we were going to try to get, originally it was hire, but then 25% of our most vulnerable kids into the classrooms, making sure that the schools were safe. It was a challenge, and it was a tight timeline. I've expressed before my disappointment that we didn't have a better vetting opportunity with the remote programs, that we ended up going with Florida Virtual basically by default, because the other one got away from us. We didn't make a decision fast enough. I also recognize that while I think union leadership has been an obstacle in many ways in terms of helping to get staff into our buildings, that with the Florida Virtual, that was something they came right out that they wanted. However, I'm hearing, and I'm really excited to know that we're going to be able to start tomorrow with this, and that I think the idea of having it specific to Lowell and having it on-demand, you can watch these videos and customize, that's all going to be extremely helpful. I did also want to stress that we need to, as soon as we get those rosters, which I'm counting on the end of the day tomorrow, having the information out to the schools, we need to start planning for the family orientation piece of it. I think that will be essential for our kids and our parents. But I guess, to Ms. Martin's point about we've had seven days in and we've got seven days to go on this professional development, I really want to make sure that we're doing everything possible. I had concerns with so much of it being decentralized as school-based, especially where the schools didn't have the information they needed. They still don't really have a lot of the information about their student rosters and things like that. What I'm hearing, some of the key things that we're missing, that either this has to come from central office direction or however you want to get it out. But I've had teachers call me and say, I'm opting in. I'm going to be in my classroom. I have had no training. Can I pass out papers? Can I collect pa... Like, we've got to be... I pass out papers? Can I collect pa-" like, we've got to be doing, you know, the really important professional development, and all of it is important, but we have to make time and space for that. Our staff are not going to be comfortable to be into, in the buildings without having that guidance. Uh, the other thing that's coming around a lot, what happened with CSO. This was a program like Google Document, like Zoom, that our teachers were using in the spring, and now they're telling me we didn't buy the license. We don't have it at our hands. We do, but is it, is it available now, or it's not going to be available for a while? And all, what about the aspects of our data system like Aspen X2? Are those going to be compatible with Florida Virtual? I think these are the things that are adding so much anxiety for our staff. And, and I'm not saying it to point fingers at anyone. I started with, we're on the same page. We had this commitment. We wanted to try to get our most vulnerable kids into the classroom, because we know a homeless student is not going to do well remote. An English language learner whose parents don't speak English is not going to do our special. We all were on the same page with that. We're all under a tight timeline, but the reality is, we have to do a better job. We have seven days. We've got to do a very clear communication. We've got to get that information out to the schools and then look at what we need to do left for professional development. It's got to be focused on, and, and it is going to be a learning curve. You know, we all know it. You're not going to walk in week two and know everything about Florida Virtual, even if you're the most tech savvy person. But people need to feel that they can trust that we're getting the information out to them. It's accurate, it's timely. And so these are the gaps that I'm hearing that concern me. I, I don't want to have a teacher say to me, "I've been teaching for over 15 years in this district. I've never called a school committee person." Have you got calls like that? Because I have. And I want to be in front of my kids, but I don't even know if I can pass out paper and collect. I mean, these are, we got a week left. Let's focus on what's ahead of us and do a better job at communication. And I'm not, again, I don't mean to sound harsh. I'm not trying to point fingers. We're all in this together. We have the best motives and intentions, but we have missed a couple of marks here that we need. Now, we've got the opportunity, Florida Virtual tomorrow, and I would like an answer. Is it compatible to Aspen and X2? And have, have, have we figured that part out? And then I've got a, a question for Mr. Hall after that, but to you-
All right. So let me first, let me first start by saying, the challenges and the anxiety and the stress, I think, are natural, given the environment, one. And two, the communication changes based on the environment. And the rea-, the way it changes is that our sequencing of communication typically is not school committee first. Typically, we communicate with the schools first. We communicate with principals, principals then teachers, then families, and then we're working through with the school committee on a policy basis. So where does the policy come in? Then we'll give you the updates and the reports. Based on this environment, all of your policies become upended, and the communication is so real-time that, you heard from the caller, parents are getting information at the same time, or maybe even at different times than the teachers, and they're hearing about it. Principals are hearing about information from school committee, because everything is such a compressed timeline, that that sequencing, the natural sequencing that we're all used to, that we're all accustomed to, that's been upended. So what we're working to do here is to make sure that instead of sequencing the communication, we run it almost in parallel and simultaneous, and it's uncomfortable, for sure, to hear that something that's happening over here, that you're used to having the information on your left side first, to then go to the right, now you're getting it at the same time. It's certainly uncomfortable for all of us as well. It's just part of this environment that we're in. You can kind of see that from the fact that you're meeting so regularly, some of the conversations we're having here tonight. Well, could we have uploaded this? That's, that's more comfortable to have this on Friday. Well, if you did, it would have been completely inaccurate, because this is how things are moving so real-time. Uh, so with that, I would say it's, it's part of the environment. It's part of our adaptation to the environment, is to do these things simultaneously, uh, rather than working to sequence them, because if we work to sequence them, you're going to be way delayed from what is even responsible for, uh, some party to receive the information, whether that be teachers, parents, yourselves, the school committee. It's got to be in conjunction with one another. And then Ms. Desmond, can you answer the question specifically about PD, uh, and the system itself, and how, how the systems align, uh, and communicate?
Uh, so the, the PD question, I, I would need to hear that again. The, as far as the alignment to Aspen, um, the, so myself and the IT department are working on the processes for the upload and downloads that happen daily. So we're, we're working through how that works. So as soon as I have more information about how that works, we will convey that to the group, but-
So are you saying it will be compatible, even if it's not compatible today? We're going to be able to use the information from our other data systems?
Well, so we have, that's how we populate, um, the learning management system, is through our information from Aspen. So it's, it's managing the downloads behind the scenes, and we do that with most of our products. So like, for example, CSO, when we have the rosters, we'll populate the CSO rosters, and then the teachers will see their, their students. It's a per-student license. So we have it in the district, so as soon as we have the, the information to populate the product, then the teachers will have access to their students in that product. So that, that's how they, that's how all of our products work, is through the, the system-
Interconnection.
Right.
So just to follow up on CSO, you're telling me we do have CSO then?
Yes, we've got licenses for CSO for pre-K to 2. So we have 4,000 licenses in the district. So they, they're per student, they're per student. So when you purchase CSO, it's per student. So we have, that is a early child, that's an early education product. So in the spring, it was, um, accessible to us, because most of these software companies provided a lot of free access, because everybody was in a situation where they needed support. Um, but we purchased that at the start-
And it is available?
Yep. We purchased it at the start of the fiscal year, because we knew that our teacher, the feedback from our teachers was that they liked it. And so when we get that feedback, we, um, you know, move forward when we can with funding to provide them with those supports, regardless of, um, you know, sort of the environment we're in. So that product, people liked it even for in-person learning. So we wanted to make sure they had that as a tool. You know, we have a lot of tools that we're providing people for this coming year.
So in terms of the professional development, just to end my question about that, where I had, you know, teachers really, especially the in-person teachers, feeling like they hadn't got the information they need about, is that a planned, uh, module or professional development session? Are we leaving that up to the schools to do individually?
So I think the, the question was around, um, the protocols for safety and distributing materials and things like that? Was that the, that's the question? It was around the safety protocols?
Safety protocols. And actually, with the CSO, I, I was told it wasn't available for a couple of weeks, but you're telling me that they have it now, right?
So we have, we've had CSO in the district since the summer, but you have to, you have to have your, your class populated. It's a per-student license. So once the rosters are populated, the teachers will have-
So everything goes back to those class rosters again? It's impossible to really do the parent piece, or to do the, you know, really for teachers to dig in and do the professional development. I don't, I'm not looking for excuses. I'm just saying, this is what we need to do better. That's what we need to do better.
So I will tell you, I'm not one for ever sharing excuses, but I, I think here, it needs to be understanding that this is the reason that we need to lock in earlier, that we can't just keep expanding out and offering out seats as we go. The lot of, we have a lot of demand for in-person instruction. So I will tell you, the demand that comes to me is, why don't we open up one more seat, one more classroom? Because all of this work has to happen in order to do that well, which is why we go back to, we lock in our capacity. We did that on the 19th of August, to get to September 17th, because yes, a lot of it, all of this work has to happen upfront. All of those opt-ins, going into the enrollment lottery, and I'll tell you, and I think I shared with the committee before, I, I bring a principal's perspective to the decision-making, and I will tell you, as a principal, it would have frustrated me to have, uh, to not have my student lists until after my family's already learned about the lottery, uh, results. But all of you were part of those conversations, and, you know, we have to make a decision, uh, because we don't have that proper sequencing coming in. I didn't have the lottery results on Wednesday night of the last school committee or Thursday. We have the results on Friday. Now we have to make a decision. Do we give it out to schools on Friday and delay for families, or do we give it out to families and know that our principals are going to get, have to continue to adapt? And I'll tell you, our principals have been adapting. Extraordinary leadership shown, shown from our principals, less than ideal circumstances, to say the least. Um, but I've been in at least a couple of schools here, where even though they're showing up yellow, I'll tell you, I have full confidence that if I opened schools tomorrow, they'd be ready to go. Um, hearing from teachers that the excitement's starting to build, at least in those few schools, and our goal is to start moving and alleviating this anxiety and stress, building to the excitement of school opening. Um, it just is about the adapting to this environment, which I have to tell you, to be quite frank, and I think going back to Ms. Martin's, what, what should we share right now to try to alleviate stress? We're going to be in this constant adaptation mode throughout. Uh, our goal is to open up more than 25%. Uh, we're going to have that on day one. We're going to work towards opening up more. That's going to continue to take us back into these conversations continuously, uh, if, and as you heard from Dr. Hall, all could be for naught. If this pandemic takes hold in a way that pushes these numbers into red or crossing that threshold, um, yield the floor back to you, Ms. Doherty. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask about the PPEs, because, again, the information, I, I appreciate, you know, we've got 100% of the hand sanit-, I'm not really sure. I, I just want an overview. Do we have what we need for PPEs for every school? And if not, what percentage of things do we have, and what is the expectation of when we will have everything? Because the safety is the underlying factor for all of us.
Dr. Hall?
Sure. So in my discussions with Mr. Underwood throughout the week, we're tracking all the deliveries, and everything we should need is already here. And I believe we have everything we need for several weeks right now, but we're going to get, we ordered three months' worth of supplies at a time, uh, obviously not knowing how long we were going to open, or even open at the time the state required us to forecast this. Uh, as you heard, we don't have all the foggers and purifiers in, but the city is, um, is tracking the purifier.
Well, you had mentioned we don't have, um, small face masks, right? So that would be obviously when we, I mean, I get it. Three months makes sense. But we're going to start school, if we are going to be able to do this in, in a week, do, will we have small face masks for the children?
We will have those.
When is those expected to come in?
Early next week.
Okay. If I could just final, say this one final thing. I think our role, we're kind of like the intermediary, you know? Where the, where the, the community elects us, right? So we answer to the citizens of Lowell, the voters, whether they're parents or teachers. So they reach out to us, and sometimes teachers will say to me, or principals say, "I really don't want my name mentioned," or "Please don't mention what school," because they don't feel safe, our parent. And I know I was one of those parents, surprisingly, right? Who was always speaking up about things I thought could be better. You, you feel like you put a risk or a target on your child if you make too much of a fuss. So I, I see my role as being a sounding board for you guys to say, "Look, I'm, I'm on your side. I want to do this, and I want to do it well for our community. And here's what I'm hearing that concerns me." And I think we have time to pivot and, and make some of those adjustments. And I know that it has been a challenging timeline, but the communication, it, it has to be multiple ways that we're communicating, especially with our families, um, about some of this stuff, so that they do have a sense that there is a plan for their child. Thank you.
Seven times in seven ways. I think the same message, we're probably hearing from different people, but you can trust that the same messages are coming in. I, I think everybody understands that the stakes are so high. Uh, we understand that this virus is real, that the devastating and traumatic effects of this virus are real. Uh, no one's taking that lightly. I think there is natural anxiety. If we're working through this and we don't have them in hand yet, will we have them in hand? I think the commitment I've made to the community, the commitment I'll continue to make to you, is that if for some reason we don't have these things that we're saying, we will make a decision to not open up our schools in person. We are working to make sure that we're all prepared remotely, that we're all ready to go remotely. The consequences of that, too, of announcing remote, is also devastating to families. But we're going to err on the side of safety. If for some reason, Dr. Hall comes to me and says, "I've been misled by the vendor. They have somehow now changed my tracking order," which has happened to all of us in our personal lives when that has happened, then I might be coming to you with a different decision. He's on top of it daily. They're following the tracking, as you heard from Ms. Clancy, following the tracking on the purifiers. They heard one delay on the purifiers, but they're still, uh, have confidence they'll receive them by the first day. If that changes, if that confidence level changes, then so too will be our decisions here. Um, because, again, uh, we understand that the stakes are high, not just for those individuals who are in school, but the entire community with what a spread might mean or a surge might mean. Uh, and we have large numbers of youngsters. Even though it's 25%, it's over 3,000 youngsters we're expecting to welcome back on the first day of school on September 17th.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the conversations here and also the comments, but I do really see this as managing expectations. And I think, you know, while expectations are high, we need to adjust a bit. And if we haven't learned anything in this last six months, is that things are constantly changing and we need to be adaptable. And that really needs to be the expectation, that things can be one-way one day and adjust the next day. Um, I was speaking with a friend who is a New York public high school teacher. She is at high risk. She had no option but to return to school, because her district was going back in person, and there were no accommodations given. And I heard Dr. Hall say earlier that he believes that perhaps we are the only school in the Commonwealth that has offered for our teachers to opt in voluntarily, to go back in person, as a way to try and meet the needs of some of our students in the district to be in person, and needs of our families to be back in person. Um, no one has a playbook on, to follow, as we are returning to school. No, no one, no one has that. And so I appreciate the, um, the idea that, right, we all want communication the way we always had it. But the truth is, it doesn't exist that way today. We can't, the whole idea is we're getting the accurate information as, out as quickly as we can, and there is, if we choose to wait and run it by, uh, you know, wait and inform the principals or the teachers or whatever first, as I heard you say, um, Dr. Boyd, we are just then kicking ourselves later, because we've now delayed the process. So I do appreciate that, again, people are frustrated, but I really feel like at this point, we really need to focus on getting back to school. Folks that are teaching virtually, it's what you've opted to do. We need to focus on it. Families that are in the situation of learning virtually, we need to get there and be positive and proactive and understanding there is going to be a learning curve. No one is expecting that on day one. Everyone is going to have this figured out. My last question, or my only question in this comment period, was, um, do we have Zoom licenses for our schools or teachers to use? Thank you.
Uh, I think Ms. Desmond and Dr. Hall, Dr. Hall's been our Zoom, Zoom king for the last, uh, several months. He'll be transitioning those responsibilities over to Ms. Desmond, who's most prepared to answer that question right now about the Zoom licenses. Is that you, Ms. Desmond, or Dr. Hall?
So I can answer to some degree. Um, so, um, we, as a district, have given teachers sort of the opportunity to choose whatever platform. Uh, in the spring, that was, um, challenging, because some service providers need a specific platform. And so, um, I believe in the task force work over the summer, they had recommended Google Meet for, um, grades three through 12, and then, um, CSO for grades pre-K to 2, with the understanding that some grade-two teachers would perhaps choose to transition to Google, to just sort of support the learning for moving forward. So Google Classroom contains Google Meet, and it's a very similar platform. So I believe that was sort of the general consensus amongst the task force and, um, the schools. Uh, but with that said, there are many schools that have, um, purchased, um, individual Zoom licenses, because the demand in the school has been that, that people do like that platform and feel comfortable with it. So that's, that's where we're at right now. Uh, again, we want to provide as many tools as possible and, and support and choice for teachers.
Uh, you bring up another important point, though, is just the amount of collaboration required. And, uh, I think all of you are in conversations with families, all of us are in conversations with families, uh, all of our schools are in conversations with families, conversations with, with teachers, and I think it's just, as well as our clerks, everybody. And I've seen extraordinary work, extraordinary talent, extraordinary commitment across, uh, the district. And I think it's also an opportunity to say that the level of collaboration has been ongoing and is, and, and in addition, has been increasing, even with our, uh, union partners as well. And we have three different union partners across the district, and we've been working with them regularly, uh, as well, if not daily.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know a couple of my colleagues are probably going to be paying attention to the, uh, Florida Virtual and for all that professional development, but can the rest of us, of our colleagues be involved with that? be involved with that as well? It's kind of unusual, but I think I'd like to know what's going to be changing, what's going to be available, and what our teachers are going to be having at their disposal. So can we be given that access to that?
Let's see, why not? Yeah. Ms. Desmond's been in daily communication with the vendor, would you say, Ms. Desmond? Hourly? I think you're going to have the local statewide expert on Florida Virtual. So Ms. Desmond's saying, "You can do it. Yes, you can do it, Mr. Dakota." She'll get you out the information.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, can you take the chair for a second?
Thank you. We will accept Mr. Dakota. You're going to be substituting.
Should I have the gavel raised?
Thank you. So I had a couple of questions. School starts next week. We're talking about information and stuff. It's, I understand it's not the usual channel. But when I turn on CAP this morning, I hear that certain schools aren't opening. Is that accurate or inaccurate? So do we, yeah, because there's all rumors going around that the Pine isn't opening, the Bailey isn't opening, and what's going on with that? Was that, shouldn't have been on the radio?
I'm also working to make sure that we can collaborate clearly with our media partners. I will be on TV on Friday and on the radio again on Saturday. And I believe I've talked as frequently as I possibly can on every station. I'm not aware of where that information would come from. You've got the most updated information. This is, Dr. Giller just shared, I believe, that he updated this at 6:00 PM tonight. These are the concerns. We're not, there are concerns, as you heard from Dr. Hall, in terms of staffing right now, but he's working through all of those concerns. You heard from Ms. Clancy. There still remain a couple of questions she's got from facilities, but she's still continuing to work from those. The committee will know if a decision is made along those lines. If it's a district-wide decision, that would be the committee's decision. I believe the authority you've granted to me is that if for some reason I can't hit a safety requirement at a school or a classroom, that I have the authority, as I do in the snow day, to close that down and notify you as such. I appreciate that authority granted to me. I will notify you immediately, as we do with snow days. If you have not been notified as a committee, you should take it for granted that somebody's sharing something out that is not a decision that has been made by me or anyone in front of you.
Okay. The other thing was, how far are we with classroom teachers? We said about 80%. So when do we, we're going to meet next Wednesday. So we'll know next Wednesday that we don't have a teacher for second grade at whatever school, and we won't have a teacher for the freshman math at the high school. So that's basically what our plan is, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to work to utilize the in-person capacity that we have at school sites. Our first tier is in-person instruction. That's going to require staffing. Dr. Hall has a couple of more steps he's going to take to continue to recruit these down, to get teachers staffed. If the classroom can't be staffed, then we'll move to an alternative arrangement of using that capacity, which I can share out with you. I'll work with principals on that, and I'll share that out with you next Wednesday to make sure we can support our youngsters in person. We have, do you know a specific percentage right now of total, because I believe it increased since last week?
I think we're about up to 87% Dr. Boyd now.
You're up to 87% of the positions. And really, what it relates to is the secondary schools where you need the full complement of teachers in order to offer a roster. That is our big question right now, Dr. Hall?
Yes.
And primarily Lowell High School right now. Now, the upside of that is those schools are not the ones that present the same concerns for us just in terms of supervision at home. But nonetheless, we'll make sure you'll continue to get the update, and we can update you daily, if that be the preference of the committee about where we are with staffing. Dr. Hall can easily send out a quick message in terms of percentages if the committee prefers. But 87 now?
I would say within a percentage of two.
I was going to say 87. It even sounds better than what I got before I came in, was 86.
I don't have the exact...
They gave me, that's what I was just going to say. It sounded like it was 86, too. I thought he just got another teacher. You're rounding up now versus down.
Because it, so it occurred to me tonight, too, when we have the staff with the teachers outside walking around, this is strictly volunteer if you want to come to the school. So nobody that's going into the school should, they should have some concerns, but they volunteered to go into the school. So, you know, everybody walking around outside, they're not going into the school anyways. So I don't understand why they're outside picketing if they're not worried about going into the school because they're not going into the school. With the upcoming budget coming up in the next two weeks, say we get up to 90%, we're going to try to fill the other 10% with hiring some teachers, right? Long-term subs. What happens to the excess staff?
There is, so I'll have that presentation for you for next week. There is an added cost there. I've got to go through some final analysis with Ms. Turner tomorrow. We currently estimate that we'll be able to fit this within some of those grants that you were hearing about. There is, we knew, and I think you may have recalled me even saying on the floor, that we anticipate needing more teachers, not less, which is why we were so confident, we were the first district, I believe, to say, "We're not laying off teachers this year." You remember back in June when a lot of districts were doing that? So the teachers that we would hire in would be to do this in-person, whatever in-person classroom vacancies we've got. And then that would ultimately have a ripple effect, more so around class sizes. There would be smaller class sizes around. We wouldn't be laying off teachers to hire in new teachers. It would be more teachers to complement our already staff so that we can offer in-person. I'll have an update for you on what that cost would be, what the numbers will be, as part of next week's presentation, which we anticipate a full budget update. Some of Mr. Howey's questions about what the annual budget looks like, we're getting some of that information in, so we'll be able to share that out with you.
All right. So are we getting a budget next week, then?
Yeah, we'll be able to...
Set a budget date?
We'll be able to share with you and then hear from the committee next week because it truly is, really follows a lot of what we did within the hearing process earlier in the year. If the committee would like to establish another additional hearing schedule, we can do that if you want. When you hear the presentation, if you believe the hearing schedule you previously established is sufficient, we're prepared to follow that, too. We'll be able to share that out with you, though, and I believe we should share that with you in written form with the memo you received from Ms. Turner on Saturday.
Okay. So my last comment or question is, we're confident that next Thursday, we're going to be able to open up. It's not going to be perfect, but we're going to open up.
We're, yes. I believe you're going to even start to see some of these schools go green. I was, did not announce any schools. I was at a school that I believe they could open up this week if they needed to. So we're starting to make some real progress here, and we feel confident that as of today, we're making the level of progress needed. But it is a daily decision point for us, Mr. Mayor. And you'll definitely hear as well, obviously, obviously.
I'm all set.
If I could, though, to use the opportunity, so as the committee, community should know, I've had a lot of, the privilege of working with a lot of elected bodies. This body is as engaged as any other. The mayor and I were communicating about what's the best way to use this platform to get you the most up-to-date information throughout this week to try to use this. We'll continue to update that. If there's a better process and a better method for next week's meeting, we can follow that, too.
Okay. I guess if there's no other questions, you can adjourn the meeting or whatever you want to do up there.
Oh, really? So we need to have a motion to accept the report as presented?
As reported.
Of the forward, of the progress?
Motion.
Motion? Seconded? Any comments? I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Dillon and seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call? Don't have to do that. Okay. Figured I had. Mr. Dillon?
Motion to adjourn.
So motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by...
Seconded. There was a motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]